It's okay, it's a manly thing.
Who's gonna do the finance report tonight?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all.
I fell. Yeah, Queenie was coming to meet my neighbor's dog so they can play playdate. And she was just so aggressive. She was bullying me.
Oh, thank you.
And went to wreck myself. She was trying to put me on the ground. And I'm like, oh, this is what she wants like this. But she just pulled me back. It's like, he's trying not to fall like that because I could break my kid.
Nicely done.
You sure right here?
Yeah. I went to sign a check today.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know why you have a problem. I do everything left in.
That's right.
No problem at all. No problem at all.
She's bad. I'll remember that, Nancy.
Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Teresa, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Excused.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Excused.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Excused.
And so fortunately, we do have enough for a quorum tonight. It requires four councilmembers for a quorum. So, we did make that. We will move on to announcements, proclamations, and presentations. And even though it's a little bit out of order on the list tonight, I would like to start with the Chief of Police Presentation, Chief Pearson.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Auburn Council. Tonight, a long-going stand of recognizing our officers, some of the great work out there. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting, from the Auburn Police Department, our Life Saving Award. And so, this award is recognized by officers who, through their conduct and their actions, are paramount and have an impact on saving the life of one of our citizens. So, to describe a detail that these officers responded to back on June 9th of this year, Officer Matt Wilkinson and Officer Mike Mabus responded to an elderly person who was in cardiac arrest. Officer Wilkinson arrived first, very quickly, went inside and immediately assessed the subject was, did not have a pulse and was experiencing a cardiac arrest. Immediately began CPR. Realized that one of the best ways to be successful in CPR is to try to acquire an AED. And the AED was brought by Officer Mabus. And the two worked at it in tandem and as a team in order to attempt to save the life of this person. At one point, the machine did tell them to shock the patient, still with no pulse, and they continued CPR. Now, these officers were able to do this as long enough to get Auburn Fire Department there and the medic unit. The person was transported and ultimately recovered and survived. According to the medic unit, these officers' actions did save the life and allowed them to get there and give the proper conduct. And so, based on their actions tonight, some of their passion and their professionalism and their actions of that day, you're awarded the Life Saving Award of Auburn Police Department. So, Officer Mabus, congratulations. And Officer Wilkinson, congratulations. I should note that this is actually Officer Wilkinson's third Life Saving Award. And so, both of these officers, I'm extremely proud of them, the work they do. I know they care about their agency and more importantly, I know they care about the people of this city. And so, with that, I thank you. I'm very proud of you and really like the great work you're doing out there. So, congratulations and accept, congratulations from the City Council.
And we.
And the mayor.
And Commander O'Neill. This was Commander O'Neill standing up here as well. So, we feel that it is very important that we share with you what our officers are doing out in the community on a regular basis. Again, their jobs are not easy jobs, as you are all aware. They're very challenging in what they do on a daily basis. They don't necessarily know what they are going to be coming up on when they are called. And they do this because it is pride and passion for the work that they do. Also want to take a moment to acknowledge our 911 call receivers and dispatchers. They are the ones that are a critical component of the ability to have a life saved. It's because of their professionalism and the way that they handle those calls when they come in. So, never want to miss an opportunity to talk about the work that our ValleyCom call receivers and dispatchers do. Tonight, we have two proclamations. One of them, the first one that we're going to do is for Children's Therapy Center Day. I believe we have Barry Gorley, CEO, and Rita Schwarting, Board President, and Susan Adams, Board Member. Is that right? Why don't you come on up, if you will?
We also have two more.
Please, please.
And we also have the founder, Sue Hudson.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us tonight. So, this proclamation says, whereas on August 29th, 1979, three visionary pediatric therapists came together to form Children's Therapy Center, to serve children with special needs in the communities in which they lived. And whereas Children's Therapy Center, a small program originally based inside a doctor's office, is now one of the most comprehensive nonprofit pediatric therapy centers in Washington State. And whereas, from the beginning and throughout their history, Children's Therapy Center has served over 3,000 children in South King and Pierce Counties every year. And whereas, the goal of Children's Therapy Center has always been to provide quality therapeutic services designed to empower children with special needs and their families. And whereas founders Sue Hudson, Nancy Heilton, Gay Lloyd Pinder.
Pinder.
Created a program of quality individualized physical, occupational, and speech therapy with a strong emphasis on parent involvement. And whereas, Children's Therapy Center maintains a high standard of service to the children and families they serve, and they have a highly qualified staff who are compassionate and strive to make each family they serve feel supported and empowered. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim that August 29th, 2019 be dedicated as Children's Therapy Center Day in the City of Auburn and give special recognition and our sincere appreciation for the outstanding work they have provided throughout their 40 years of outstanding service to the community dated this 19th day of August, 2019. Barry, am I going to, I'll present this to you. And I'm sure you have a few words that you would like to say about Children's Therapy Center.
Well, Mayor Backus and council members, we want to thank you. We really enjoy the partnership between Children's Therapy Center and the City of Auburn. And I just want to say thank you for Sue Hudson, for starting us 40 years ago.
Yes.
Pretty fabulous. Thank you so much. Is there any chance we, all of us can have a picture with councilmembers?
Absolutely. We can, why don't we stand right up?
Here, council, come on down, come on over.
Now, I have a phone. Does somebody have, somebody like to take a picture?
Our city attorney doubles as a photographer.
Fabulous, fabulous.
It may or may not be a good thing. Come on in.
Never meet.
Are we close enough here?
Here we go. Look this way. Thank you. And another one. Slightly different angle. Perfect.
The angle that makes me look tall.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you for the work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful work that's done in our communities. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do. All right. The next proclamation is for International Overdose Awareness Month. And some of the statistics in this proclamation are going to be a little startling. And I was asked if we wanted to keep them in. And the answer is yes. If we don't come to the reality of what's going on in our communities with overdosing, then we are never going to fix it. And watering down a proclamation is just not the way to do service and justice to those who have lost their lives. So, whereas in 2018, 67% of drug and alcohol-caused deaths involved an opioid and 54% involved a stimulant, and deaths involving a combination of opioids and stimulants has significantly increased from 17% in 2009 to 32% in 2018. Whereas, King County experienced 415 overdose deaths in 2018, and Auburn sadly had 38 overdose deaths, approximately 5% of all overdose deaths in the county. And whereas, Auburn Police Department officers administered 60 doses of the life-saving overdose reversal drug Narcan since 2016. And whereas, preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas, deaths from drug overdoses are preventable, yet many people continue to die. We must encourage people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and break the silence and stigma, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment. And whereas, in Auburn, law enforcement and first responders have the authority to carry and administer the life-saving drug naloxone. Our medical professionals and police officers continue to provide aid to combat the opioid overdose epidemic. And whereas, the city acknowledges the grief felt by families and friends, remembering those who have died as the result of a drug overdose. And whereas, now there, I for Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2019 as International Overdose Awareness Day in the City of Auburn. And I encourage all citizens to join together to observe this day and encourage citizens to be part of the solution and help spread the message that tragic overdose deaths are presentable. Time to remember, time to act. Dated this 19th day of August, 2019. Battlefield Addiction was unable to be here tonight to receive the proclamation, but they will be hosting an overdose awareness event this week. And so, I will be presenting this proclamation to them at that time. So, again, some startling facts and data in here, but it's something that we can't overlook if we are going to win this battle. All right. We have no appointments this evening. Teresa, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, Mayor, we don't.
All right. We have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided. And please limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Sir.
I'm Don McGurty. I live here in Auburn. And I was wondering about this litter contract that you have, if it's up for bid. I was cut out of it last year. And I was wondering if it's coming up this January again, in a new contract.
I'm not sure we have the answer to that question for you this evening, but let's see. Jamie, that comes through finance. So, if you could talk with the gentleman and get some contact information, we can provide you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. My office is located in Bellevue, Washington. Good evening, Mayors, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today. I'll keep this very short. I just would like to thank you, thank the Council and the city staff for all the effort that you've put towards the ordinance 6721, the franchise agreement with Verizon Wireless. Verizon is very excited to be partnering with the city to better the service of the businesses, the visitors, and the residents of the City of Auburn. I am available if you have any questions, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Virginia Howgan, 2503, R Street, Southeast, Auburn. First, I want to thank 911. When you see a serious issue on the freeway, you know it's really scary. And you call 911. Boom, they're on it. Love it. Thank you so much to our police department. When we need them, they're just out there, and I'm so glad. Thank you. Now, I've lived here since, I came here permanently in 1964 in June. When I hear a story about our Parks Department, like I heard today, you think, I didn't get angry? Number one, if we're going to talk budget, you can cut $500,000 from the Parks Department as of tomorrow morning. Nobody in Auburn is going to notice because we have the most incredible Parks Department in the whole world. No one has a better Parks Department than Auburn, Washington. When you hear that the lady takes her seven-year-old boy to Brannon Park, he has to go to the bathroom, he's jumping around like crazy. She takes him to the restroom, the restrooms are locked. You got a baseball game going on over two of them. You got a soccer thing, somebody is practicing football. A whole park full of people and the restrooms are locked up. She goes to the Santa Can with the kid. It's such a filthy mess that she almost throws up. She puts her kid in the car, she has to take him to McDonald's to go to the restroom. We don't want to hear stories like that. And you have budget problems? We do not need a new finance director. Tell me that Shelley Coleman didn't know what she was doing? She could explain to this dummy about creative financing. I understood. I don't know if Bill understood, but I did. Shelley Coleman, I considered her a genius in finance. I was at the mayor's very first little, the little Finance Committee meeting, and she was brand-new on the council. And I said, what a smart lady. She got it together. You people are not stupid. Now, if we have a problem with our finances, do not let us go bankrupt. Straighten it up, please. Thank you.
Just for the record, there is not a chance for the city to be going bankrupt. That is not in any of our foreseeable futures. So, just want to put that out there for the record. The city is not going bankrupt. All right.
Couple of years.
All right. Correspondents, I don't believe we have any correspondents for Council Review this evening. We will move to Council Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council, if any. We currently have one ad hoc committee, that is Finance. Chair Wales is, has an excused absence tonight. So, we will go to Councilmember DeCoursey for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wales and I reviewed both the claim vouchers and payroll vouchers. Claim vouchers dated August 19th, 2019, in the amount of approximately $4.72 million. We found no errors, no discrepancies, and all in good order. We also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period of August 1st to August 14th, 2019, in the amount of $2.33 million. We recommend full approval by council.
Thank you. All right. We will move to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes the minutes of the July 8th, 2019 study session, minutes of the August 5th, 2019 City Council meeting, claims and payroll vouchers I just described, and CP 1720, the Game Farm Park Number Four Ball Field Lighting Project, and also setting a public hearing for franchise agreement for New Singular Wireless, franchise agreement FRN 190014.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Did I not allow you to speak? Were you wanting to say something tonight? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. We have no unfinished business or no new business. We will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 6721. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, granting Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership, Delaware Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, a franchise for wireless telecommunications facilities.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 6721.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Auburn City Code requires a franchise of any commercial utility or telecommunications operator or carrier who wants to use the public ways of the city to provide telecommunications or commercial utility services to any person or area of the city. A staff presentation was presented July 22nd, 2019 to the council, and now is the appropriate time to move this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6721, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6726. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, relating to the limited public works process and amending Section 3.12.100 of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I would like to, uh...
Your microphone.
I would like to move to adopt ordinance 6726.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
I would second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
This ordinance came to us, and it's an ordinance to include modification to contract authorities and process for the limited public work process to be consistent with the current RCW. City Code 312100 is to be amended to match the bid limited, limit authorities to be in line with the state competitive bid limits.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6726, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5450. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the contribution and withdrawal of city monies in the state of Washington local government investment pool.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
Move to adopt resolution 5450.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. With the recent retirement of Director Coleman, we were required to provide an authorized individual for all amendments, changes, and alterations to the Washington State Local Government Investment Pool. And this resolution require, allows us to do that.
Thank you. Questions, comments, council? All those in favor of resolution number 5450, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Well, that was quick business of the city this evening, so we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember Reports. At this time, the Mayor and City Council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin tonight with Councilmember DeCoursey, since you are sitting in the Deputy Mayor position.
Well, thank you. It's nice to be sitting here, but I have no report tonight.
All right. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just report that I missed a couple of meetings. Was out of town on some business back east. But I am happy to report that what I was able to participate in was exploring some housing and infrastructure investment opportunities for our community. And so, we're hoping to have some investors in affordable middle-income housing and hope some of that splashes onto Auburn. We are anxious to bring good union jobs, building those houses and building the infrastructure needed, but also to provide housing inventory for much-needed housing in our community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Yes, I just want to do a report on the August Fest. The parade started out with a little bit of sprinkling, and I think it kind of scared the people to come out because this was the first time I've seen our parade lines, our sides not be that full. But it was well-received with the ones that were there, and it was really exciting. Then I went on over to the park and, because I had a high school friend that drove me in the parade, and she wanted to, she's from Bellevue, and she wanted to see what, how we celebrate our August Fest. And she was really excited to, and enjoyed the food and also the music. I have to say, you guys outdid yourself with the music. We sat there for probably about an hour listening to the music. It was really nice. And it started getting full by 3:00. People started bringing their kids out, and it was really well-received. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
No report, Your Honor.
Oh, you know, this could be a 7:30 cutoff meeting tonight. This could be, this, this...
You've got four minutes.
I, well, don't worry, I'm not going to take all of those. Just, we ended the community picnics that we had scheduled for this summer. We had one on July 30th at Evergreen Heights Elementary School and one last week, let's see, on the, on the 15th of August at Brannon Park. And that completed the community picnics for the summer. We will look at ways that we can engage with the community, of course, year-round, but we will look at what can, what we can do in the summers when it's really easy for people to be outside and enjoy good weather. So, stay tuned for more. And if any of you have any ideas on how you would like for us to engage with you, please let me know, because we are always looking for the best way to ensure that we are hearing you and that you have an opportunity to share your ideas with us and ask us the questions that you have. We also had last Thursday night the, what's officially being dubbed as the Last Summer Cruise-In. But hopefully, Daryl will be able to convince the group that is overseeing those for us to maybe have one on what was supposed to be the Rain Makeup Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. We had, I would say, a record number of cars turn out. And this is at the former Big Daddy site, which is part of the Lescov Community Campus now and right by the Crow with Fries. And we had roughly 85 cars attend. And that is a record number for the cruise-in. So, very excited that those are gaining in momentum and popularity. There were some beautiful cars there, some absolutely gorgeous cars. And it's an interesting group when you get all these car lovers together on just how... all these car lovers together on, just how, what a nice group of people it is. And then on Saturday, the 17th, I attended the 75-year celebration at Wesley on Lee Hill. Obviously, they have not been there for 75 years, but Wesley has been around in this region since the 1940s, and they really did it right. They had a small car show out in their parking lot, they had soda jerks providing milkshakes and hot dogs, and they had a band playing hits from the 40s, and they just really did an outstanding job. The residents, the people who work for Wesley, really did a stellar job of celebrating this community, and just a reminder, we lost Mayor Chuck Booth just recently, but to have a place like Wesley was really his vision and his passion, so that members of our community could live here their entire lives if they chose to do so. Prior to Wesley, we really didn't have any places for people to go when they retired and wanted to sell their homes and rid themselves of yard work and maintenance and upkeep, and because of Mayor Booth's tenacity and connections in the community, we have that gem on the hill called Wesley, and we should be very proud of that. Mr. City Attorney, do we have need for a closure executive session tonight?
No, Your Honor.
We are done before 7:30.